Good evening. My name's Alan Germaine and I'm your new moderator. Kara tells me we have a quorum of...
One hundred and thirty-one.
One hundred and thirty-one. Non-voters, non-residents, please sit up in the balcony. Anybody up in the balcony that has a clicker, please move down to the audience. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing following the pledge, please?
Here we go.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with whom God is just as holy. Thank you. Dave Robinson has graciously offered to do the invocation.
Is this on? How's this working? Is this on?
Yep.
Wonderful. The chiefs involved, things happen. Our Father in Heaven, I am humbled to stand before you, these honored and distinguished men and women today, to stand in the gap and offer this prayer. Today, we gratefully recognize the gift of life, liberty, and responsibility you have given us to lead this town. On behalf of these men and women, I ask for wisdom, discernment, and the unity as they carry the weight of caring for the close to 12,000 citizens of Carver. We've come together in a civil assembly as a community in a tradition that is older than our town itself. Let us remember that in the end, caring for each other in this community is a far greater value than any differences that we may have. We are grateful that you have shown grace and mercy to each of us. Please give us these servants the skin of a rhino and the heart of a lamb. We humbly ask all of this in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you. Can all be seated.
The only ones are fat. Go us.
I hope you can forgive the lack of a jacket. It's kind of warm. I'd like to introduce everyone with me to my left. Town Council Greg Corbo, our new town administrator Glenn Cannon, our new finance director, I'm sorry, Karen Preval. I actually had this set up with Karen sitting beside him, so forgive that. Chairman of the Select Board John Carter. And Mr. Chairman, would you introduce the rest of the board?
Yes, thank you. To my left, your right, we have Vice Chairman Jim Hoffman and Select Board members Mark Townsend, Sarah Hewens, and Dan Ryan.
Thank you. To my right, we'll try this again now, Town Clerk Kara Dayhill, our Assistant Town Accountant Laura Petteen, we have Elaine Weston, our Assistant Town Administrator. Now we have Karen Preval, our new Finance Director, which by the way, she's doing a great job. We have Ron Griffin, the School Administration, and Scott Neath. To my right on the stage, we have our School Committee chaired by Stephanie Clarity. Madam Chair, would you introduce your committee?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. To my right, your left, is Vice Chair Kelly Neme, followed by Katie Sullivan Secretary, followed by our newest member, Bill Cullen, and then Jackie Lake.
Thank you. On the stage to my left, your right, is our Finance Committee chaired by Pat Maher. Mr. Chairman, would you introduce your committee?
To my left, we have Beth Solger, who is also Chair of the Capital Outlay Committee, Walter Cole, Tony McCrina, Barry Struski.
We also have our Capital Outlay Committee chaired by Beth Solger. Madam Chair, you have a committee member with you and three committee members on other stations. Would you introduce them?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Jim Cullen, member of Capital Outlay, John Carter, also on Capital Outlay, and Jackie Lake from the School Committee.
Thank you.
Moderator.
Yes.
We have one other member who is not seated up here with us tonight, but is Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, and that's our humble moderator.
What about the humble part? Just a couple of quick ground rules. Short explanation on the informational items at the beginning of the warrant are for reference. You'll see the warrant looks a little bit different this year. We've included some basic stuff. There's also some... There's the Town of Carver bylaws, there's the Carver Town Meeting Procedures, and then just some common phrases that are used. You'll also see a brand-new addition. It's an amendment form. Anyone wishing to make an amendment to an article, please utilize that form. Fill it out, Article so-and-so, what is your amendment? It requires a name and address and a signature, and you can turn it in to me and I'll hand it to our Town Clerk. It just keeps everything uniform without having it written on the back of a matchbook cover and a napkin. I would ask that anyone wishing to speak would approach one of the microphones. We have three, and if you need a portable mic, we have one available for those that perhaps cannot get out of their seat. Please wait to be recognized by the moderator. Raise your hand if you do need a portable mic. All questions will be directed through the moderator and back-and-forth discussion will not be allowed. Should anyone wish to call the question, they must move to a microphone and be recognized. A person cannot just yell it out from their seat and interrupt the speaker. A person cannot make a speech about the article and then move the question before sitting back down. The motion must be made and seconded. The motion requires a majority vote. Explain that votings will be by clicker, but I think some of the easiest ones we may do by voice vote, because it's simpler. It's also a little faster. This is a question I have. I was going to allow 15 seconds for the vote, and that will be on a timer. If you think that's too short, just raise your hand and I'll make it 20 seconds, whatever the pleasure is. But we started off, I think, when we first used these, we allowed like a minute and a half or something, and that was crazy long, and then we cut it back to a minute and cut it back to a half a minute. And I think we ended up last year, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, I think we ended up last year like 20 seconds or something like that. So do you think 15 seconds is adequate, or would you prefer to have 20 seconds? Twenty? Okay, then we'll do 20 seconds, no problem. We're going to need to test the clickers, so if everybody would... I do not have one. If everybody would grab their clicker and tell us how much you love having a June 4th Town Meeting, answer yes or no, and we'll give you 20 seconds. Begin. Five seconds. Time's up. So we have 132 total votes, 81 yes, 51 no. I would also like, now, I'd like a motion to allow Town Employees and Town Council... There's 161 clickers. I've got 132 on the count. Can we try that one more time, please? We're trying to get an accurate number. So if everybody would please try that again. Oh, okay. The little top button with the...
Looks like a lightning bolt.
Little flag on it, like a lightning bolt. Make sure that light is on, and then when you make the vote, it should show up as a confirmation. Let's try this again for 20 seconds. Time's up. It's time? Is everybody getting a confirmation when they hit the button? Eric?
I'm getting an A, and then I'm getting a 1. I'm not sure which one is.
Mr. Moderator, in past years, the moderator would tell when the voting was to open. I think people might be pushing the clicker before the tally's ready to start accepting votes.
Bear with me for one sec. I'm going to ask again, anybody that's up in the balcony, can you please move down, that you have a clicker? You need to move down into the audience, because the range of the clickers may not reach all the way up there. So if you don't mind, if you have a clicker and you're sitting in the balcony, please come down to the auditorium section, the lower section. We're going to try this again. We're going to open the vote. Begin. Close the vote. Just so you know, if you see an A in the display, your vote has not been counted. You need to see a 1 or a 2, which would be a yes or a no. If it shows an A, then your vote is not being counted.
It is to say okay.
The yellow 3C is disabled, so that's not going to work at all. So it's 1A, 2B is yes, no. I'm so sorry. We're going to do this one more time. Sorry? No, A? No, 1A and... The green and the red are working. Yeah, the yellow is not working, which is 3C. So 1A is a yes vote, 2B is a no vote, and 3C is disabled. It's not working at all, so you can't abstain. All right? Try this one more time. Let's open the vote.
An okay. Okay.
Five seconds. Close the vote. We're at 157 on that count, so I'm going to go with that. I'd like a motion to allow Town Employees and Council who are not residents to be allowed to speak. Council Greg Corbo, Town Administrator Glenn Cannon, Finance Director Karen Preval, PC, Police Chief Mark Dufry, and Assessor Joe Roche. Joe, are you here? Oh, there he is. And School Superintendent Scott Neath, Chief Operations and Finance Officer Ron Griffin.
Moved.
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. I'd like a motion to waive the reading of the warrant and to accept a proposed motions for Articles 1 to 13 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to waive the reading of the warrant and to accept a proposed motions for Articles 1 to 13 as printed in the warrant. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. We can move to Article 1. We'll move to Article 1 as moved and seconded. Article 1, the Annual Town Report. I need a... I don't need a motion, actually. I'll open that for discussion. Who's going to present that? Oh, okay. We can move right to a vote. You can do this as a voice vote also. This is a recommendation of the Select Board 5-0. All those in favor of accepting Article 1 as printed in the town warrant signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Article 2, Fiscal Year 2025 Operating Budget for the Towns is now open. That was a 5-0 Select Board, that was a 5-1 Finance Committee, it was a 5-0 School Committee for the school budget. Mr. Chairman. Would you like to speak to Article 2?
The FinCom voted 5-1 in favor.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Would you like me to speak to the budgets? Can we bring up the slideshow?
Oh, you can take this.
That's fine, bye now. Yeah, the mic's working. Again, my name's Glenn Cannon. I'm the new town administrator. I've been on the job for three weeks now, and I would like to present to you the Fiscal Year 25 Budget. I am pleased to present the Town of Carver Fiscal Year 25 Operating Budget. The Fiscal Year 25 Budget reflects the ongoing efforts between the Town Administration, Finance Committee, and the Select Board. This budget represents the town's plan to allocate resources to meet the current and future needs of our community. As we see more moderate revenue growth going forward, we will need to identify our key priorities, institute sound financial policies to ensure that we can sustain our existing town programs and maintain our long-term financial health. The town is committed to the professional management of our finances to ensure we can deliver high-quality services, build and maintain essential infrastructure, and invest in key community priorities. This budget reflects the continued commitment to that practice, which will be more important given the economic uncertainties in the future years. The town's financial team is committed to transparency. How we spend our money reflects our priorities and our values as a community. If we could go to the next slide. The town revenue, and I'm going to read off a lot of the numbers here, folks, so bear with me. The town revenue sources for fiscal year 25 consist of the following. Property taxes, $33,449,707. Local receipts, $3,857,47. Ambulance receipts, $1,028,771. State aid, $13,740,661. Free cash, $1,104,423.96. And cemetery revenue of $20,000. The free cash allocation for this fiscal year will be used to support several trust funds. If we could go to the next slide, please? This is just a graphic representation of the numbers I just read off, for more people more visual. If we go to the next slide, on the operating budget here, the fiscal year 25 operating budget of $53,197,699.96 consists of the following. General Government, $3,512,462. Public Safety, $5,354,504. Operations and Maintenance, $2,135,421. Human Services, $767,422. Culture and Recreation, $516,751. Debt Service, $2,815,825. Benefits and Shared Expenses, $10,127,013. The School, $24,247,250. Transfers, $944,960.96. And non-appropriate expenditures, $2,775,999. If we go to the next slide, it's just, again, it's a pie graph showing those same numbers I just read off. And the final slide, I am happy to report that we do have a balanced budget, so thank you very much for your patience.
I'll open it up to any comments. Anyone wants to speak on it, come to the microphone. Please state your name and address.
John Gasky, 162 Plymouth Street. How much of an increase in our budget is this from last year?
Yes, Karen?
Thank you. The increase in the budget is around 5%. So we're looking...
5%? And how much is that going to affect property taxes?
You, Mr. Monitor. So for our tax levy, the increase was 4% in our tax levy. In FY '24, the tax levy was $32,148,115. This year it's $33,446,707. Tax levy is set by a 2.5 increase in new growth. So there's a set by the Department of Revenue that was certified earlier this year.
So there's still an increase of at least 1.5% for those of us who are not new?
Some of the increases in this budget, if you're looking, if you're comparing FY '24 to FY '25 in terms of the operating... Your operating town costs, you have different shared costs in the budget, but your operating costs have gone from $10,686,935 to $11.9 million. Your shared costs have increased from $12.9 million to $13.2. The school budget increased from $22.5 million to $24.2 million. And then there are various transfers. Some of the operating costs for FY '24 include transfers that have gone to different stabilization funds for the town. Welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, there are three motions within this. Proposed motion is that, you can read them in the warrant, 1, 2, and 3. You can take these as one vote, which I assume that will work. So seeing no other movement to the mic, we will open the voting, starting now. 20 seconds. Five seconds. And the time is up. Close the vote. Passes 129 to 29 for a total of 158. We've gone to Article 3, the Enterprise Fund, as previously moved and seconded. See if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $636,221 for the purpose of funding the North Carver Water District Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2025. Mr. Belbin.
Hello, everyone. Robert Belbin, 26 Geets Street. See if we can keep this in the right spot here. There we go. Maybe not. Okay. So as your new North Carver Water District Chairman, and the only member right now, if you're interested, there's two seats available. I have no idea how this budget was created, because I didn't create it. I can only tell you what, if you haven't seen my video on the Cable Access Channel, you should take a look at it, because the North Carver Water District, the facility itself can produce good quality water. I've seen the reports. It can do that. The facility needs to be cleaned up. It was not maintained appropriately.
All right, Bob, I'm going to stop you right there. You need to stay to the scope of the article, which is dealing with the numbers. I'm not going to allow you to get into the condition of the North Carver Water District, how tall the grass is. This is off of what this article is. This is dealing with the enterprise, strictly the numbers on the enterprise account.
In order to get to the numbers, you have to know what the number's going to be used for. Correct?
No. The numbers are on the paper. The Finance Director is here. If you have a question, you can ask it through me of the Finance Director, but this is balanced, and I'd be more than happy to have the Finance Director explain exactly what these numbers have to have. We still have debt to pay, so I'm told. So I'm going to confine you to what's in Article 3, not your vision for the North Carver Water District.
Point of order, Mr. Chief.
Go ahead.
Moderator. As a department head of the North Carver Water District and a town official, elected a town official, I have the right to speak to this article like any other person within the town, as a department head could speak to this article and not be three minutes, because you have the right to speak to the article. This is the article to fund the North Carver Water District. The public has a right to know what the money's going to be used for, and that's what part of my discussion was to be, is that this budget is going to be to use to fix the place's health and safety concerns. It's going to be used to repair anything that wasn't repaired over the past many, many years. Okay? It's going to be used to hire a new company to come in, because we... It's going to be used to hire a new company to come in because we are...
I'm going to stop you again, Bob. We're off the article. You need to stay on the article and the enterprise account. You're telling me, you're presenting a North Carver Water District budget and a future expense. That's not what the article says. I'll give you more time, but you identified yourself as a resident, then said you were the chairman, so I'll certainly give you more time.
Wait a second.
As the chairman of the district.
All right, number one is I have to introduce myself, or where I, my name and my address.
Absolutely.
That's number one. Number two, I introduce myself as the chairman of the North Carver Water District.
Bob, I'm not going to go back and forth with you. I am not going back and forth with you.
Okay. Well, you don't have to go back and forth with me. You have to give me the opportunity to let the public know.
As long as you stay germane to the Article 3, I have no problem with letting you speak to it.
Article 3 is the budget here, correct? This is the budget that I was presented by the town, right here. This figure at the bottom, $636,221, that's what you're voting on. Do you want, I'm just going to ask you, do you want to know what this money is going to go towards? Yes or no?
Are you talking to them or are you talking through the moderator?
I'd like the moderator to ask people, put it to a vote, to say, do you want to know what your money is going to be used for?
I'd like to stay within the scope of the article. You want to spread this all out, and I don't want to allow you to do that. We want to stick to the article.
All right, I'm done. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. You've got to come to the mic, Kim.
Kim Shea, 148 Plymouth Street. My point of order is, we have a new North Carver Water District representative who would like to explain the budget. We had our new town administrator explain a town budget and go through the line items.
That's correct.
And I think it's only fair that we get to hear where this money is going to be spent. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I'd like to see if our Finance Director would like to address any of this.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Monitor. The FY '25 Enterprise, North Carver Water District budget consists of the following expenses.
Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Moderator. I'm sorry. I can't bring up the issues, all right, to this public. But a non-town resident, and she may be an employee, and I, she's very, very good, don't get me wrong, this is impersonal to you, but it's okay for you to do it, but not me. Hey, the gomoxi I love.
Sorry for the interruption, Karen. Please continue.
Through you, Mr. Monitor. In the budget, the operating costs for the North Carver Water District, salaries and expenses are $404,965. We also have debt service of $231,256. The debt service payments for the North Carver Water District go out into 2049. And a breakdown of those expenses that we incur on an annual basis are Plymouth Street water line extensions, around $12 million. We have the water commissioner's salary, they get a stipend of $450. We have electrical bills, around $42,000. We have gas payments, so there's a lot of different utilities. We have other professional services where there's different vendors that are working to maintain the district. We also have telephone costs, chemical costs, municipal insurance, around $27,000. And we have allocated $200,000 in the budget this year to cover different capital items. So if there's different capital costs that come up, whoever is the commissioner and the water commission, when they have the board, can vote to use some of that funding to cover different expenses for this particular project. And as I mentioned before, we have debt service payments of $231,000. That's a summary, through you, Mr. Monitor, of what we have been spending annually for this particular fund.
Thank you. Select Board voted for nothing on this, and did the FinCom take this up? Okay. Pat?
9 Redtail Lane. Just to make a couple of points about this article, Mr. Belbin said that this wasn't his budget, so I don't know how he can explain it, or what it's going to be used for. The other thing is, is you've got a North Carver Water District with one member on a committee, and I don't know if anybody wants a single person to be in control of everything. So I think that... One member, so they can vote any way they want, so...
Please.
I'm not sure that's the way to go.
Anybody else want to step to the mic?
John Gasky, 162 Plymouth Street. With the departure of small water systems and having to find a new company to manage the North Carver Water District, is the budget, does it have enough wiggle room to cover the cost of finding the new company and whatever increases that the new company might end up costing the North Carver Water District?
Sorry?
Mr. Moderator, could you please answer? So for the cost of finding the new company, Glenn Cannon, Town Administrator, I would see that primarily being done by the North Carver Water District Commissioners or town staff with our assistance to help them find the new company. Whether or not the existing budget would cover the same cost as the small water systems, that would be determined by the new costs associated with it. So if we had to come back for an increase in budget, we'd have to do that, but we don't have that number right now to answer that question.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Paul Owen, 151 Main Street. To Mr. Mah, if we only have one person on the Board, as you said, and that is such an issue for you, I think we should probably remove it from the article and wait until we have enough members to properly vote on it.
Just knock them right over, don't worry about it.
Helen Maroney, Harvest View Way. I'm not going to comment whether Bob should speak or not, but when he first got up, I was going to commend him because he's the only one that wanted to be part of the North Carver Water District. And as much as I respect you, Pat, it's, we can't get people on these committees, so to say that a person that was willing to serve, again, I'm not going to comment whether he should be speaking or not, but I do want to say that I think we should all commend Bob Belbin for standing up to a very difficult committee to... trying to salvage our funds in the town, so...
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. Please open the vote. You have 20 seconds. 5 seconds. And close the vote. The vote is 113 to 54. It passes as printed in the warrant. Moving on to Article 4, Capital Improvement Budget, as motioned and seconded, we'll open that for presentation. Who's doing the capital? Beth, are you doing capital?
As you can see, the capital outlay voted to approve the capital budget before you for $1,002.6, $1,260,000. We were presented these amounts this year from each department head, and they had all collaborated and agreed that these were the projects that they would like to have done. With that, we were initially given $1,002.1. We ended up with $1,002.6 because we added to it the $50,000 for the feasibility study. But just so you know, these were all agreed upon by all your department heads, and these were the projects moved forward for 2025.
And I should have mentioned the Select Board voted 5-0, capital outlay voted 4-0, and did FinCom?
We voted... Oh, sorry.
FinCom voted 5-0.
Thank you. I'd like to hear quickly from the ones that are listed here, the Fire Department, Chief, if you'd be so kind, or Eric, or... You have three items on here.
So I understand. What are you looking for, Mr. Moderator?
Article 4, the three items on the capital improvement budget.
So I'll just, I'll be very brief. I mean, I could go talk each one a lot depth, but basically we have three articles for the Fire Department. The first one is to rehab Brushbreaker 28, which is located in South Carver. That'll be for $300,000. That vehicle, right now, is approaching 27 years old and obviously needs to be rehabbed. We're doing something similar right now with Brushbreaker, excuse me, 29, 28, and I might have said that wrong. It's actually 29 that we'll be rehabbing. 28 we're doing right now, which is in South Carver, that's going to be scheduled to be delivered in the next, actually, couple days. That was rehabbed by a company down a little north of us, and so that will be completed. You should know that with this rehab of our brush breaker, those brush breakers are responsible for about 15,000 acres of the Miles Standard State Forest. That's the third most combustible forest in the United States. And so it's very important that we maintain those pieces of apparatus and make sure they're working properly. And if I add to that, a new brush breaker at this time is about $800,000. So to do a rehab of $300,000 is obviously some savings in there that we think is worth it. The second one I have is to rehab one of our, excuse me, our only marine one vessel, our boat, that was purchased in 2008, and right now it's 17 years old. The goal is to rehab that. Ribcraft is actually leaking, so we have to inflate that kind of a regularly, so we want to get that fixed. I expect that vehicle to last at least for another 10 years, and that cost will be about $20,000. The final item we have is to rehab our two live training burn rooms at our training facility. That built, that facility was built in 2016, and believe it or not, it's seven years old. It's estimated that over the seven years, over 200 intense live fire trainings have been conducted on the first and second floors of those burn rooms, providing countless real-life training opportunities for your firefighters. Right now, we anticipate that maintenance to be about $75,000. That will include new ceiling tiles, new wall tiles, and new insulation behind those The rest of the, the rest of the building is in excellent condition and will last for years. I think that's a very small price to pay for the state-of-art trainings the fire, our facility has provided for every firefighter here over the last seven years. So that's just very briefly on the COB fire things.
Thank you, Chief. Information technology is pretty simple, unless you want to hear an explanation for Operations and Maintenance, Dave, do you want to speak briefly about those three items?
Good evening.
I just think it's important that everybody know where this money is going, that's all.
So for the three articles that Operations and Maintenance has requested, the first one is $100,000 for energy efficiency. This is part of our long-term plan since Carver adopted to become a Green Communities Act five years ago. Put in for this every year, we've done projects every year, what this $100,000 would do would be to replace more lighting in this building to LED lighting. That's some of your lowest-hanging fruit. It's our quickest return on investment for energy savings. I have also put in for close to $190,000 in grant money, which we're hoping to receive. We've been very successful in those grants the last four years, and that would be for, excuse me, building weatherization and also LED lighting in this building, which we are doing in phases. The second item is $70,000, and that would be for a 3/4 ton pickup with a plow, and that would be for the two groundskeepers we have, which take care of the school fields, all the recreation fields, municipal ball fields, soccer fields, and that nature. They did have a vehicle that was taken out of commission last year due to safety issues, so that would be to replace an existing vehicle, not an addition. And the third article is for $50,000 to hire a company to do a feasibility study. The three buildings we're looking at, there is a misprint in here, I must point out, so it's going to be to hire an architectural engineering firm to look at the old fire police station building, look at the overall condition of it, what the town's needs are. Possible needs would be for, to look at the Council on Aging Building, is that is an aging building, and what are the long-term needs for that, and also the, where it says emergency management, that is a misprint, it actually should state emergency medical services. That would be to look at the building where the ambulances are currently housed now, to look at those three things. And that study will tell us the condition of the buildings, what possibly could be repurposed, and what would be our best road to take, looking at those three structures.
Thank you, Dave.
Helen Maroney, 8 Harvest View Way. I've always been concerned about the green energy efficiency. I'm just wondering, now that we've been a green community for a few years now, Dave, if there's any statistics or numbers that have been calculated on how much we have actually saved since we've been a green community? And the second question would be, $100,000, do you have any idea what the recovery time will be there when it will stop benefiting us?
The second part of the question, the return on investment to LED lighting over the current lighting is a five-year return on investment. So we'd see that money recouped within five years, and then the savings would start after that, would be 100% savings. The first part of the question, I don't have those numbers. I don't know if, I'm looking at Elaine Weston. I know we do get statistics from, from the state.
Yeah, actually, I think we did just receive statistics recently. I can, I don't have them off the top of my head, but we have to, as a green community, reach a 20% reduction in energy use within five years, and I believe we're in our fourth year.
Yes. Thank you, Dave. Any other questions for Operations and Maintenance? For the police request, they have a couple of items. Chief?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If you want to speak, I'll be brief. So we have two items on this year, replacement of three police vehicles and the replacement of our duty firearms. As I've spoken to this body numerous times, we have a cruiser program that has one cruiser per officer. That cruiser program's been instrumental in saving us a great deal of repair money over the years because they're geared by that officer, and they are scheduled to run seven years or 155,000 miles, whichever comes first. Many of the times, we've gone much past that seven years, gotten to sometimes 10 years for a police cruiser, which is amazing. This year, we originally asked for two marked cars and two admin cruisers. With the number being reduced, we reduced that number to one marked car and two admin cruisers, so we'll be looking to replace a brand-new marked cruiser and two admin cruisers. The admin cruisers that we're replacing are one of our detectives' cars and our admin sergeant car. Those were purchased about six years ago, used, used police cars from another police department, a grand sum of $2,500 per cruiser. We've run them for six years, and they've reached the end of their life, so we need to replace those. We always do our best every year to make the use, best use of the money that you give us. As far as our firearms, we purchased new firearms back in 2013. Duty life for police firearms is about 10 years. We're reaching 11, so we'd like to update the firearms as would normally. Last time we updated firearms in 2013, we'd waited 22 years to do that, and we were having a lot of unreliability with the firearms and broken firearms. a lot of unreliability with the firearms and broken firearms, so we're not waiting until we get to that point this time. There's two requests on there. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for the Police Department? Hearing none. School?
We have several requests here, and I'll just kind of go through them briefly. First is a wheelchair van to purchase and equip. So we actually have several students who transport out of district who need specialized services, so we do need an additional van to transport those students to their schools, which are out of district. We currently have two vans in the fleet. One is 2017, one's a 2019. The 2017 has approximately around 180,000 miles on it. Try not to use that van if we don't need to. We're also, like I said, we're having increased number of students who need these services, so we really do need the additional wheelchair van. Middle high school classroom modernization. This is actually something we've been doing over the last several years, and I think we've spoken about it here before, and I want to thank the community for their support for this project. So we're investing in this building with the realization that there's probably another generation of students, those people, for me to speak about this, I say this all the time. The reality is, our kindergarten students will probably end up going to school in this building, and then, then the town may consider whether, what they're going to do with this space in 15 years from now. And so we've been upgrading the fixtures and facilities throughout this building. So when you came in, you noticed in the lobby, there's some new furniture in the lobby, and we're basically taking a department at a time and replacing furniture, desks, the classroom spaces. So we, in the past, we've done the English Department, the Special Education Department, and the Guidance Department. Next year, this would be to do our math classrooms. So we'd upgrade the furniture and fixture in our math classrooms, and hopefully, the town will continue to support the modernization, modernization of this facility. Middle high school parking lot repairs is, there are areas in the parking lot that are in disrepair. Dave might be able to speak to this a little bit better than I am. I'm not asking you to, Dave, but the goal here is, this is not, obviously, the $37,000 isn't going to repave the entire middle high school parking lot, but it will go through and fix rough patches. The middle high school concession project, as you all know, when we built the new field and the new stadium, there used to be a concession stand on that facility, and there was a lot of discussion about adding a concession stand over time. That's been a point of constant discussion since we built that project in 2018. And we're actually excited that we've partnered with Old Colony to build a new concession stand. So if this amount was approved for $65,000, we'd work with Old Colony. We're in the design phase. We had a very small picture of design upfront as people came in, and I think people will be excited about adding that concession stand to the pad that's already out there by the bleachers. So that's where it will be located. We, at the time, we built the stadium, we roughed in that project, so water and electricity was put out there. And so I think this would be a kind of finish off that project that was begun six years ago. In terms of firewall replacement, I know it doesn't sound very exciting, but a firewall is the technology for security apparatus that, in that sense, keeps hackers from being able to access our systems. Our firewall has come to the end of its useful life. It generally lasts eight to 10 years. The Director of Technology for the School Department, Stephen Honie, is saying that we need to have this replaced, so we'd be replacing our firewall, which will maintain and increase the security of all the devices and all the technology within the school department. Elementary school educational technology, we're going, we're looking to transition from where we have, we have now what's called short throw LCD projectors, which are smartboards that interactively project, like that one, up in the ceiling. That's a long throw, and projects down there. Every classroom at the elementary school has those. The lifespan on those are five to 10 years, and actually, and some of them are already starting to go, as crazy as that sounds, I know, people in their minds are thinking, I'm trying to make this adjustment. People in their minds think that building's brand-new, it's a brand-new building. But it actually opened in September of 2018. It's six years old. It's going, it's going to be going into its seventh year. I know that sounds amazing, but it is going into its seventh year. So this would actually be a, our goal is, over a three-year period, to replace those LCD projectors, what's called touchscreen TVs. They're also interactive, so the teachers and the students can interact with the boards, and actually, they have a much longer lifespan because it's a more, these, those types of projectors are being used much less, and, and the technology is going towards a touchscreen TV that actually has a longer lifespan. So we actually want to begin that project, rephasing those in at the elementary school. And the last one for middle high school educational technology is replacing the laptops for our teachers at the middle high school, so we'd be doing a half of them. The goal would be on, on the long-term capital plan is that we'd have $65,000 for this year to do one-half of the teachers' laptop computers, and then next year, you'd see this request again to replace the other half. And I'd be more than willing to answer any questions about any one of those items.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. We will take the vote. You ready? Open the vote. Begin. And close the vote. Motion passes for Article Four, counts one forty-five, four, eighteen against, for a total of one sixty-three. Article Five, revolving funds. I believe the school's back up on this one, too.
It's okay, I'm going to let Ron speak about this a little bit, if that's okay, Ron.
I didn't tell him he was going to speak.
Proposed article in front of you is simply to open up a new revolving account. By law, it's required that the legislature, all of you, vote that any new revolving accounts exist in the municipality. This particular revolving account would allow your athletics department to essentially do an advertising project where they would work with local community vendors and companies to do small advertising signs out on the field in exchange for the funds that they would put in this revolving account. The revolving account that you see there would ultimately be used to provide the athletic department with some funds to cover costs for unanticipated equipment, materials, supplies, those sorts of things that can sort of augment the athletics program here in your community. A lot of communities in the southeastern Massachusetts region have already begun these kinds of programs. Carver's a relatively small community with a relatively small commercial base, so we don't intend this to be a large program, certainly not something that's going to supplant your already existing athletics budget, but it'll be an opportunity to connect and work with our local community companies and hopefully give our athletics program some additional funds every year or so to try to buy those things that otherwise can't get covered in the budget. I can certainly answer any questions you might have.
Also, we have the Select Board voted four to one, and the School Committee recommended five zero. Any questions on Article Five? Seeing no movement to the mic. We will open the vote. Voting is open. Twenty seconds. Close the vote. One thirty-nine to twenty, for a total of one fifty-nine, the Article Five passes. Article Six, Community Preservation Committee Report and Recommendations. Mr. Bentley.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as presented. I'm going to actually go through the various appropriations that we're interested in having, and I'll, I'll read it off to you as a whole, and then I'll go back and talk about article, items one through four.
Okay.
So the total amount that's anticipated for the town to be receiving this year from CP, Community Preservation Act funds is $1,4,750. That's comprised of community, committee administrative expenses of $30,450, middle high school track debt service of $331,275, the cleanup activities at 11 Green Street of $105,425, and repairing of historical records for $7,000. And then in reserves, which is required by law, we're putting in $93,475 to historic preservation, and unrestricted monies are going to go in the amount of $437,125. So the last two, I'm not going to actually go back and explain because that's pretty well, they're reserves. But items one through four, I want to, I want to give some explanation so that the body understands exactly what, what's happening here.
Sure.
The committee, committee administrative expenses of $30,450, we are allowed by law to, I believe, take 5% of the total and put it into administrative expenses. I can tell you unequivocally that since the inception of the Community Preservation Committee in the town, we have never spent even close to that much money, and whatever money is not expended there automatically goes into the unrestricted fund. So it's not like we're being spend, spend drifts and spending a lot of, lot of money on, on administrative expenses. The middle high school track debt service is on year five of 10, and that's 331,275. That's a required expense. We, even if, even if the town body decides to vote it, vote it down, it will still come out of the funds. The cleanup activities at 11 Green Street, we approved 11 Green Street for an affordable housing project three years ago now, and in the due diligence done by Habitat for Humanity, they found that there was some, an oil spill in, in the actual cellar. And in the process of, of the licensed site professional going in and looking at the, the oil spill and determining what was going on there, he actually found some asbestos. So, and this, this, by the way, is a town-owned property, so one way or another, this has to be cleaned up. The, I've talked to the Community Preservation Coalition, and, and we believe that this money is appropriate for, for the purpose, and so therefore, we're going to unfortunately be spending $105,425 to clean it up. That's with the caveat that the town planner is actually going out looking for additional monies from the state to help clean it up, and if that happens, the, the total amount that's requested is going to be decreased. So it, it won't, that won't, that will come out, out of any monies that are taken. I'm hoping he's going to find a lot of money. And then repairing historical records, the town clerk came to us, and prior town clerks have done the same thing. Virtually every record in the town clerk's office is a historical record and needs to be retained and retained in good quality for the, for the foreseeable future. So Ms. Dayhill came to us and asked us for some monies to actually have certain records actually bound and, and put in, in books so that they're permanently kept and that they're not able to be degrading any further than they already are. We have some records that are dating back pretty, pretty long time ago, and I, she, she showed me some of them, and they look like they're in pretty tough shape. So getting these done is a good thing. So, Mr. Moderator, I'd, I'd like to have the article voted as, as a whole.
Any comments, any questions, any? Yes, sir.
Alan Maynard, one forty-eight A, Plymouth Street. For you, Mr. Moderator, the question on historical preservation, will that include digitizing?
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't think I heard that.
The question on historical preservation of the records in question, town records, will that include digitizing them?
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
So the records that we're currently trying to bound and bind in, in books, they're in protective sleeves. The cost of those sleeves have gone up to almost $1.15 a piece or sleeve. It's, it's beneficial to have them bound in a book, so they're vital records, they include death records, marriage records, and birth records. At some point, it would be nice to have them digitalized, but for right now, we're just trying to get them as they're coming in and put them, and have them bound. There are a number that were done years ago, and it's space-saving. We have a small vault, and I understand...
I'm not questioning at all anything in regard to your judgment and necessity of preserving the records. My point is, why handle them twice? Why not get a price and find out what's lost, and they can be digitized at the same time?
I actually did look into that, and the company that we did get a quote from wanted to take the records off, off-site. So the way it works in our office, anyone at any time could come in and ask for one of those vital records, and if we didn't have them available to give, there's nothing that we could do. So it is a future goal to have those digitalized, but for now, it's, it's preserving them, trying to condense them so that we can continue to store them and have them, you know, in a safe space where they'll fit.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Moderator, I should note that the informational summary that's attached to this is an integral portion of, of the motions themselves. They actually state more facts.
Thank you. I think what I heard was that, since the records can't leave the building, they would have to be digitized on-site.
On-site. It's very expensive, too, the, yep.
I'd also point out that the Select Board voted four zero on this article, and the Community Preservation Committee voted seven zero on this article. Are there any more comments or questions? Seeing no movement to the mic. Would you open the vote? Begin. And close the vote. Passes one forty-six to twelve. Article Five, Article Six passes. Article Seven, donation of land, 56 Fosdick Road. I believe that Tom Bott was going to present this, but he's ill tonight.
Do you, Mr. Moderator, have some information on that?
Sure. Mr. Carter.
Just for some background, some of this is in the article itself. In the summer of 2023, the planter and conservation agent were approached by Joyce Bacioli from Arrobe's Propane about the property. The Tremont Street, Tremont Enterprise Company has owned it for years. The planter and the conservation agent formed a site visit. As stated in the article, there's about 78-foot of frontage on Fosdick Road. There's wetlands about 200 feet in, crossing a stream that bisects the property. There's also a chain link that surrounds the property. Both the planter and the conservation agent felt that it's a good piece of land for the town to own and use as open space and has potential for walking area or walking trails. It's unlikely that a buildable lot, based on this size of the, based on the size of the wetlands, being larger than 5,000 square feet, and with the 200-feet wetlands deep into the property, it's unlikely you can build anything on it.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Any other comments on Article Seven? Savory?
Good evening. Savory Moore, 12 South Main Street. I'm chairman of the Conservation Committee Commission. There's an old adage that states, anything that starts with the word "free" is good, such is the case with this five-acre parcel off Fosdick Road. This basically unbuiltable rear lot with access to the street contains the wetlands and streams, as Mr. Carter just said, and lends itself to potential further use as public space for the residents of Carver. And properties like this, which are transferred to the stewardship of the Conservation Commission, are protected forever, a definite plus as more and more land in town is developed. As chairman of the Conservation Commission, I personally recommend that the town vote to accept this property on Fosdick Road in order to protect it from growth forever and to provide more open space for everyone in Carver. And remember, it's free.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Select Board voted five zero on this. Did the Conservation Commission take this up?
No.
And I'm assuming planning didn't either? Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we will open the vote. Voting is open. You may begin. Twenty seconds. Five seconds. And close the vote. Motion passes article seven, one fifty-two to thirteen. Article eight, senior veteran tax work-off program. I believe that Mr. Roach, our assessor, would like to speak to this.
Hi, I'm Joe Roach. I'm the town assessor.
On the mic, Joe.
Oh, sorry. Joe Roach, I'm the town assessor. The Board of Assessors recommended increasing the senior work-off tax amount and veteran tax work-off amount from one thousand dollars, which is the maximum amount that could be earned, to fifteen hundred. This is earned at the state minimum wage, which is fifteen hun, fifteen bucks an hour. So currently, volunteers can work sixty-six and change hours a year. This would allow volunteers to work a hundred, a hundred hours. So overall, this would increase the impact, the overlay, by six thousand dollars for the twelve or so residents who participate. The town, assuming all participants worked the maximum amount of hours, would get an additional four hundred hours of volunteer work. It's a great program. We get a lot of work done in Town Hall, and the Board of Assessors is recommending that you approve this article.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone from the town administrator's section? Want to weigh in on this? Select board? Looks like the select board voted five-zero for this, the assessors voted three-zero for this, and the finance committee voted six-zero for this. Any other comments or questions? Seeing no movement to the mics. Open the vote. Five seconds. And close the vote. Article eight passes, one fifty-seven to five. Article nine, a home rule petition regarding group health insurance for eligible employees and retirees. I'm not exactly sure who's going to present this. Did we? See a lot of pointing going back and forth.
Sir? It's moderator, I'll take it.
Flipping a coin?
Mr. Moderator.
Sarah.
Through you. The short history of this is that a previous administration and a previous select board actually came up with the idea of cutting employees' healthcare from the seventy-five, twenty-five that it is now if they retired after June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. This is, this represents, in my opinion, a broken promise. When you're hired at a certain rate, that's what it should stay. So this is not going to increase our costs at all. They are currently seventy-five, twenty-five, so it will just remain that way and be fair to our employees.
Thank you, Ms. Ewens.
Yes, sir. Hi, Alan Dunham, eleven Ricard Street. I was part of the board. We, when we came up with this, it was originally designed and thought of was to save the town because health insurance costs were going completely out of control, and with some way we could bring those costs down for the taxpayers. We chose ten years so we'd give the town and employees time to go ahead and make plans for this, or maybe come up with a better idea on how we could go ahead and help the I kind of take a exception with Ms., the member of the select board said that this will not increase the cost. That may be true, but it's taking away potential savings. I would like to know, did the finance committee take a vote on this?
We did.
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
I don't have that number. Did you guys take this up?
We did. We, we took a vote and voted for one.
For one? Okay, thank you.
In favor of this. Not from a, not necessarily from an economic point of view, but from a point of view is, if, you should, you know, retire at what you started in.
Yeah, and I understand that. And like I say, I was originally going to come to this floor and urge the body to vote against it. But having a chance to reflect on it, and the fact that nothing was done by this select board or the previous town administrators, maybe lessen the impact, I don't think it's fair to the employees that are close to retirement now and thinking, should I stay and give their service to the town or leave early? I don't think it's fair to change what they've gone through since there was no other plan put in place or worked on since. So I think the only thing we can do to be fair to the employees is to go ahead and vote in favor of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Ms. Gisaldo.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Gisaldo. I reside at two zero four Main Street. I'm rising in support of a yes vote on this. I was on the insurance advisory committee when this came up. It was highly contentious. I had to hold my nose the whole time, and here's why. We need to be able to recruit and retain the very best employees. My heart is with the school department, and I want the best teachers and staff in our schools. Secondly, I am so pleased with our public service employees that I don't want anybody running off and retiring because they're going to face fifty-fifty on their health insurance split. We have a great fire chief, a great full-time fire staff, that is full-time. We have the, the chief of police, we have our police officers, we have people in the municipal government. These are all valuable people we want to keep. We don't want them running out and retiring because of this. So I thought it stunk then, so I've been waiting a long time for us to correct this wrong and do this right. Please vote in favor of this.
Thank you, Deb. Any other comments? Anyone from the board? Seeing no further movement to the mic. Would you open the vote? You may begin in the vote on article nine. Five seconds. Close the vote. And the article passes one twenty-seven to thirty-five. Article ten, adoption of the town code general bylaws. I believe this is going back to you, Glenn.
Yes, sir. Again, Glenn Cannon, town administrator. This is a, a simple article, folks, to allow our vendor General Code to renumber and rearrange our existing bylaws. They actually won't change any of the bylaws. They just put them in a format that's easier for us to understand and follow. It will allow, allow our vendor General Code again to put the bylaws into a searchable format also, so that's a good thing for us as we're looking things up to work on here. It's very similar to the zoning bylaws you'll see in article thirteen. That's all, Mr. Moderator.
Any other comments or questions? Wow, cool. Hi, Joanna.
Joanna Layton, four Wyndham Shores Drive. I've many a times looking for things. I'm also the chair of the redevelopment. How many times have I called the town clerk and said, oh, my God, this is a mess. I can't find anything. This is ridiculous. And I'm going to tell you, you can save legal bills, nothing against you, Cor, Mr. Corvo. Maybe this will help you when you find all the answers you want, all codified together. You put in the word like, well, we'll use water. Mr. Belbin was here. If you wanted to know everything about the water, what happened, when it happened, it'll all come together for you. The other thing, too, if you go after public records, you might find all your answers. You don't have to go after public records, cost you money and time as well. So it's really good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I highlighted it. It says here, being a compilation and comprehensive revision of the present bylaws of the town. This is really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna. Any other movement to the mic? Seeing none. Whoop, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Alan Maynard, one forty-eight A, Plymouth Street. Sorry, I don't move so, move so fast, Mr. Moderator.
Not at all.
Question with regard to the language, the, probably the penultimate sentence. All bylaws of a general and permanent nature, as amended heretofore in force and not included in the code, shall be repealed, except that such repeal, repeals shall not affect any suit or proceeding pending as a result of an existing law, et cetera. What bylaws, what general and permanent bylaws does that clause refer to?
Would you like that, or would you like that?
This, this motion calls for repealing something. What is being repealed?
Perhaps town council.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. What this article does is it recodifies all of the existing bylaws. So what is being repealed is every bylaw of the town, and it is being, and they are all being replaced with the version that is now part of the general code. So substantively, nothing is, is changing, nothing is being repealed, but procedurally, we're replacing the old version with the new version.
I just heard it's being repealed and nothing's being repealed, and maybe getting a little bit too late at night for me, I guess, because I don't really understand how something can be and not be at the same time.
What he said was being repealed and nothing's being replaced.
He, he said it not being repealed as well. If I'm, if I'm not correct, then I, I would probably be corrected. I guess my, my point is-
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I apologize if, if I misspoke. All of the prior bylaws are being repealed, and they are being replaced with the new versions that are in the general code. However, the new versions of the general code are essentially the same as the old versions that are being repealed.
I'm not looking to be argumentative, Mr. Moderator.
No, no, not at all.
Once again, the devil's in the details. Essentially the same. What changes will be made? What will be repealed? Is there, is there some assurance that can be given? Perhaps I should make a motion that the content will not be altered, except in terms of the-
That would need to be an amendment, I'm sorry.
We need an amendment, exactly. But I guess can it be explained, or do I need to make an amendment?
Amendment needs a second.
Okay.
We need to write that out.
I will write it out.
If you'd be so kind. And then you're more than welcome to speak on it.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Sure.
So this might be unnecessary, because town meeting has to approve any changes to the bylaws anyways. So for you to come and say that, that no changes can be made, that's already, that's already part of the bylaws. They, they can't make any changes to the content of bylaws without bringing them to town meeting.
But I think his concern is that the explanation given, he would like assurances that the bylaw cannot be reworded while they recodify. Perhaps council, you can clarify that a little further.
Thank you, through, through you, Mr. Moderator. So the town clerk worked with the folks at General Code to create this new version of the bylaws, and that new version of the bylaws is available and has been available on the town's website for quite some time. Maybe Kara can, can explain that in greater detail, and I believe that there is a link to it here. Is there not?
No.
Yes, there was, there was a link that shows you where on the website to go to find that bylaw. So whatever changes are in that code that is on the town's bylaw, that's what you're voting on here tonight. Nothing further will be changed after tonight's vote unless it comes to you for a subsequent vote.
So the original response was essentially nothing has changed. But that doesn't mean everything. So the question I guess I have, without trying to move this along, without making an amendment, is, are the only changes consisting in the formatting and the ordering of the document? Are there any changes made to wording? Any changes made to punctuation? Any changes made other than corrections that are obvious in nature?
You want that?
Because if we are voting on something-
No, I understand.
I'd like to know what it is.
I'm, I'm fine. Kara?
So it's my understanding, this started back in two thousand fifteen when they undertook the codification, and it was to reorganize, renumber, and to change some minor, maybe a spelling mistake or a grammatical error, and that is all it is. So from two thousand fifteen forward, we would give General Code all of the AG approvals from every town meeting from then forward, and they take those and they just incorporated them in. But if you would take a look, if you have a mobile device with you, you can pull up the town website on my section under the town clerk. You'll find on the left-hand side the drafts, and I think once you look at them, you're really going to see what was done, and I think it's something that the whole town can be proud of. They look really nice, and they're searchable.
And, and I'm not comfortable with any of that, and as far as the end product, I'm sure it will be very useful. How many pages is it?
What's that? I'm sorry.
How many pages is it?
How many pages?
How many pages?
I'm not a hundred percent sure. They've condensed them.
Ten, fifteen, five?
Our bylaws are a lot more than that.
It's a lot.
They're a lot.
Hundred?
You can look at them, and you can see a nice table of contents, appendixes, all the special acts. Everything has just been reorganized. That's what, uh, General Code does. It's a company that comes to do it for us. It's a hundred and seventy pages.
Seventy pages, so we're-
On the phone.
I'm going to look at that on a, on a mobile device, I'll leave it in intermission, and I'm not going to ask for that. I'm just simply, I, I guess I'm trying to establish something, and I keep asking questions. I keep hearing words like essentially or repeal, what not repeal. So I, I'll sit down now, but I just, I want to make it, you know, go on record as, as saying that, I think it would be, it would be more clear that nothing has changed substantially. Would town council, Mr. Moderator, be willing to say nothing has changed substantially, the actual substance of the wording of the bylaws?
Council?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. I, I accept the explanation of the town clerk that there have been minor modifications with regard to punctuation, grammar, things of that nature, the organization, the numbering. However, it is my understanding that there have not been substantive changes to any bylaws that were previously in effect.
My concern is not simply that someone's doing something nefarious, but that something substantive may have been changed inadvertently by changing the, the text or something like that. So that's the concern here, because we're voting on it.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Again, this draft of the bylaw has been available to the voters. Anybody who was interested in looking at it, to see what was changed, had the opportunity to do that before this evening, and that is the version that's being voted on tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, there's still a, a motion in a second for an amendment. Are you withdrawing that, or?
In light of where we're going, I will withdraw that, if, if my, if my second will withdraw as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Select board voted four to zero on this. Any other movement to the mic? Hearing none. Would you open the vote? Vote is open for article ten. You may begin. This is a majority vote. Should have said that before, I guess, too. Five seconds. And close the vote. Motion passes one forty-three to seventeen. Moving to article eleven to adopt the Mullen Rule for adjudicatory hearings. I think that Savory was going to talk about this. Were you not going to mention something about this? Because, okay, because I know Tom Bott was going to present it, and he's out sick. I'm sorry, Con, I didn't see you there.
That's quite all right. A point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, sir.
Um, the planning-
The Planning Board did not initiate this article. They did not hold a public hearing, and they certainly didn't make recommendations on it. This contains falsehoods and leading inaccurate information. Now, the Planning Board last year did initiate it, did hold a hearing on it, and did give a recommendation to strongly reject it. But that was, that was a year ago, and Town Meetings saw fit to reject it as such. I don't know that this article can, should be accepted in its current form. It's got Planning Board written all over it, and the Planning Board had nothing, absolutely nothing, to do with this. Maybe there's some confusion on the zoning bylaw that the Planning Board did put forward this year, that they unanimously moved to Town Meeting, that they held a public hearing on, and in that case, too, also recommended against it, but that's not on, on this warrant. This one that's here was not done by the Planning Board, was not, there was no public hearing, and there was no recommendation by the Planning Board in regards to this. Town Meeting resolutely voted it down last year, and I just think it's a waste of time. We addressed it a year ago. Is it just going to keep coming back until we pass it? That's, that's my point of order, Mr. Moderator, is that the Planning Board had nothing to do with this, and we did not hold a public hearing, we did not initiate it, and we didn't make any recommendations as stated here.
Thank you, Connie. Just hold on for one second.
I would like to make a motion to withdraw this article.
I think it needs to be indefinitely postponed, right? Needs to be a motion to indefinitely postpone, Connie?
I'm sorry. I was looking for the...
Needs to be a motion to indefinitely postpone, not withdraw.
And I'll make a motion to indefinitely postpone this article number...
And there's a motion. Okay, so there's a motion and a second.
11, Article 11.
To indefinitely postpone Article 11, the adoption of the Mullen Rule for judicatory hearings. Is there any comments on that motion? Hearing none. We can open the vote? This is on indefinitely postponing this article.
Before we open the vote, could you just explain what a yes vote and a no vote means? In other words, a yes vote will indefinitely postpone this?
Yes. A yes vote makes it go away. A no vote means we start all over again. I think Laura's trying to get it up on the screen. Yes.
It's all a paper use.
Thanks, Staples.
Thank you very much.
Just an indefinitely postponed. It was motioned and seconded. I'm really not sure it's an amendment. I think it's just a closing motion. It's a motion to indefinitely postpone, and it was seconded, so it's just a normal majority vote, motion. It's not on the screen. There we go. I'm sorry. Motion to indefinitely postpone. Open the vote. Motion is open. 20 seconds. A yes vote will stop it, a no vote will start it all over again. Five seconds. Close the vote. And this is indefinitely postponed by a vote of 135 to 22. Article 12, Finance Committee Bylaw Amendment. At this time, I'm going to ask the former Town Moderator to step up, and I'm going to appoint him as a temporary Town Moderator, and I'll step away from the podium. You thought you were out. No such luck. Reason I'm doing that is because I wrote the article. It's all yours, brother.
All right. He gets a chair. That's crazy. And I'm entirely too tall. So on Article 12, the Finance Committee Bylaw Amendment, it looks like it requires majority vote, and Select Board voted four to one, and Finance Committee six to zero. Do we have any presentation on that, Alan? You can? All right. Do you want to come back up here?
This, Alan Jermaine, 24 Pine Street. We've been trying to do something with this bylaw for five years, and the current language is arbitrary, it's confusing. We've had counsel weigh in on it, we've had differences of opinions. So we cleaned up a lot of the language that, we took out like the words and counsel on aging, because how that ever got in there, nobody knows. The biggest change to this wording in this is Article 4, is Section 437, which says that no member of the Finance Committee may be on any other board, committee, or commission without the approval of the Select Board. So the old interpretation was FinCom, that's it. Well, we had myself on other committees, Pat Mahaw was on other committees, we had other members of FinCom that were on other committees, and we currently have members on other committees that would come on to FinCom. So we didn't want to just make it a blind, you can just come to FinCom, doesn't matter what other committee you sit on, even though the Select Board always has veto power, we wanted to put the wording in there that says without their approval. And then it goes on to further say that if you're on a committee, you must abstain and recuse from a vote of a committee that you're on if there's a budget for that. So it just cleans up the language. Select Board liked the entire bylaw change, except 4.3.7. FinCom was in favor of it.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Jermaine. We'll go ahead and open it for debate. Mr. Shea?
Alan, Ms. Leighton.
Oh, in the middle.
You go first?
No, please.
Oh, thank you very much. Alan, you're absolutely correct, and I think everybody here, if you've been coming to the Town Meeting the last two, maybe three years, Alan would always stand up and say, "We're going to postpone this because we're still working on it." Well, I kind of got mad of always working on it, so I approached the Select Board, and I want to give credit where credit is due. I approached Sarah Hewens, and I said to her, "Can you listen to my cause?" And she did. And I said, "Could you take up the words where I pointed out, just as Alan did?" And she said, "Yes, let me take a real good look at it," she says, "and to rewrite it," which she did. And the most important parts, it makes them, the first part of it says it makes them eligible, everybody, even if you work for the, for the town. And the most important part, if you read the bottom, it says the Finance Committee members, it says, "may not sit on another board." The Finance Committee members may, is that, am I reading it right? The Finance Committee members may not sit on another board, committee, or commission, here it is, without approval of the Select Board. Oh, thank you, Mr. Ryan, you put that in. All right. Okay, let me keep going. Or bylaw requiring of the budget, a Finance Committee representative. And here's the other, the strongest part that Sarah put in. Said member must recuse him or herself on any Finance Committee vote of the budget or financial matter of that board, committee, or commission on which they sit. They have to recuse themselves. Now, I'm the chairman of the redevelopment, we're looking for a new member as well. You know how hard it is to get members to serve on boards, multiple boards, never mind one board. I really hope you understand the thoroughness of this and of the whole thing as well, but this 4.3.7 is really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shea, you're up next.
Thank you very much. My only concern is Section 4.3.7. Basically, what it does is allow the Finance Committee to sit on all other boards and committees, and do you really want people holding purse strings sitting on the school committee, making decisions or giving permits on your conservation committee, deciding on projects for the planning and development in this town based on financial aspects? It's not going to be, it's not going to work out in the best interest of the town. The state, the state ethics strongly recommends against it. Our bylaws have been around for quite a long time, strongly recommend it, sitting on a board and committee in this town. I do understand the need, and Bob Belbin has most certainly stressed it this evening, for people to join committees, but do you want the same people sitting on every committee? Do you want the same eight or 12 people sitting on all your committees and making the decisions? I'd like to make a motion to remove all changes to Section 4.3.7 of this bylaw. What was bylaw?
So that's a motion to amend, is that right? Okay. A motion to amend Article 12, and you have it right now here? Of course, Alan had to give me a hard one here. So as written here, the motion is to remove all changes to Section 4.3.7, so that would essentially leave it as is. Would you want to have a look at that? Yeah? There was a second on there, right? Can we have a second on this motion? Okay. Motion's been made, a second, we'll go ahead and open it for debate. Yep, Ms. Shea.
Kim Shea, 148 Plumb Street. I, to Mr. Shea's point, the State Ethics Commission does have guidance for Finance Committee members, and it does state, it has a section, Section 20, about sitting on other boards and committees, where they do allow exceptions, so they don't want you sitting on other boards and committees. And I know those regulations have changed a little, and I didn't know if Town Council could maybe expound upon what the State Ethics Commission says about a Finance Committee member sitting on other boards and committees if they're not deemed a special town employee.
Mr. Corvo?
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. So under the rules of the State Ethics Commission, you cannot hold more than one paid position with the municipality, and so if, to the extent that this bylaw provision would then authorize a member of the Finance Committee who may be receiving a stipend to then sit on another paid committee, that would present a conflict of interest issue for them, unless they were, either of the positions were designated as a special municipal employee position. So, you know, that would be something that would have to be determined on a case-by-case basis, and it would be up to the individual employee to make a decision as to whether or not they are permitted to hold both of the positions to which they've been appointed. If they're not, then they would have to resign from one of those positions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes, I have to add, this is the first time I'm hearing this. Through you, Mr. Moderator, we could, I believe the committee stipends can be opted out of. So would that negate that? So let's say that I sat on ConCom and FinCom, and I could pick which stipend and choose to, we have members of FinCom that don't take a stipend, they opt out, there's a form for that. Would that cover it?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. No, the State Ethics Commission takes the position that it's not up to the individual employee to accept or reject the stipend. If it's a paid position, then, and that position has not been declared as a special municipal position, then the employee is prohibited from holding both positions at the same time.
Interesting. I'd like to have known that ahead of time. I think I would then make a motion to indefinitely postpone this article again.
Oh, we have to dispense with the amendment?
We have an amendment.
Yeah.
Which can be withdrawn if we do an indefinite, definitely postpone it. We need to clean up the original language, which is still extremely ambiguous. The language as it's currently printed makes no sense.
At this point, you're commenting on the main motion, we have to dispense with the amendment, and then we can go back to talking about the main motion.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. You know, I'm not meaning here to imply that this arrangement can never work, that a member of the Finance Committee can never sit on another board or committee. There may be other boards and committees that are not compensated, to which the prohibition in the conflict of interest law would not apply. It is also likely that a position like the Finance Committee would be deemed eligible as a special municipal employee position, and in which case, the exemption would not apply to that either. So it's something, again, that would have to be determined on a case-by-case basis, but the statute does not provide a blanket prohibition on all service on multiple boards.
Okay. Ms. Shea?
Yes, to my point, I, I think the amendment was just for that section, because there's a lot of changes here that I think a lot of people are okay with. And I, I don't think this amendment is to prevent Finance Committee members from sitting on other boards and committees. I think there's just concern from the ethic standpoint. My understanding of what a special town employee is, is based on your town population, but there are exceptions to that, too, and I am not a lawyer, so I just think it's something that we should explore a little further to make sure that we are doing everything on the up and up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shea.
If I, if I may, I'm sorry.
Mr. Jermaine, yeah.
I'm going to run out of my times here. Current language as it's written says that the Finance Committee, anybody, any registered voter can be a member of the Finance Committee, except elected and appointed officials, full and part-time employees, and anyone having a financial interest in the town. When this came up three years ago, Counsel was asked to define this, explain it, and the explanation that we got, correct me if I'm wrong, Counsel, is any board, committee, or commission that is established in law, be that federal, state, or bylaw, is in fact an officer of the town. So my comment was, well, if you become an officer of the town when you get on the FinCom, and the FinCom expressly forbids you from being on FinCom if you're an officer of the town, then how does this work exactly? In precedent, if we go back six years now, I sat on three other committees at the same time, and it's not just, this isn't about just me, because I've, I'm content, but we have other members, Pat Mahaw would have run for reelection on the RDA had this bylaw been in place last year. The Select Board has always had the power to veto an appointment by the town administrator. They've always had that 14-day, "We don't like it." All this does is put that wording in place and gives them the option, it still gives them the wording they were originally looking for, no other board, committee, or commission, but then lets them make the decision before they have to veto it. And then it goes on to say that that individual cannot be involved in any vote taken for a committee that they're on. We can certainly explore the other end, and if it's going to be an issue, the Select Board can certainly not allow that appointment to happen. So it protects it as well as cleans up the language to make it a little more understandable. That's, that's on the amendment. That's, that's on the amendment.
Thank you, sir. Yep, on the right.
Karen Lapham, 67 Main Street. I just had a concern that we were kind of worried about Bob Belvin being on one board by himself, doing his own thing, but now we have one person that wants to be a part of every single board, and I just don't think that that's right. Have one person that's willing to give up his pay for a board to be on a different board, and when something sounds too good to be true, I've always found it usually is too good to be true, so I'd say I don't think that sounds right at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further, motion to the mics on the amendment to strike the changes to section 4.3.7 of Article 12. We'll go ahead and get that set up on the screen here. Okay? And we'll go ahead and open the vote. Now, again, just to make it clear, a yes vote here will, will strike any changes to section 4.3.7. A no vote will leave those changes intact, and then we'll go back and vote on the whole, all the changes in Article 12 together. Yeah, okay. Then I have to repeat that one more time. So, again, a yes vote will approve the amendment which strikes any changes to 4.3.7 in Article 12. A no vote would not approve this amendment, meaning that the changes that you see written in the warrant for section 4.3.7 would remain, and we will go back and vote on those changes along with all the other changes in Article 12. We'll just give you a little extra time on that since we had to explain. And we'll go ahead and close the vote. Okay. The amendment does not pass, oh, yeah, the amendment does not pass with 82 against and 74 for. So, going back to the main motion on Article 12 to approve the changes as written in the warrant, any further debate on that article?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
A question. Can we break that out into four separate votes? Or does that have to be all?
A motion to divide the question would be needed there. So, you could make a motion to divide the question.
I'd like to make a motion to divide this into four separate votes.
Okay, and those would be along the lines of each section, 4.3.1, .4, .6, and .7?
Correct.
Okay. So, motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to divide the question. Is that debatable? Okay. So, this is not debatable. It does require a majority vote, so we'll go ahead and get that set up on the screen here real quickly. We need to state on the screen how many sections we're dividing it into, do you think, or is the explanation is good enough? Yeah? No, that's fine. Okay. I'm told that we have this ready here. So, again, the motion that's been made and seconded is to divide this into four sections, divided up as the sections are written in the warrant, 4.3.1, .4, .6, and .7. Each of those will be taken up individually, so a yes vote would, would break it into those four sections, and no vote would leave it as-is, and then we'll go back and vote on it as a whole. With that, we'll go ahead and open the voting. And close the vote. And with that, the motion to break this into four sections fails with 94 against and 59 for. So, going back to the motion at hand. I hear someone, okay. Okay. Seeing no motion to the mics, we'll go ahead and vote on this main motion to approve Article 12 as written in the warrant, and we'll go ahead and open the voting now. And close the vote. And the motion passes, 87-4 and 62 against. Thank you very much.
You can stay.
You're doing a fine job, sir.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for doing that. I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody, for your indulgence with that. Moving on to Article 13. Is that where we are? Well, moving. This will require a two-thirds vote. This is a zoning bylaw change. Article 13, adoption of town code for zoning bylaws. I believe Mr. Bott was going to speak on it. I don't know what is going on with that right now. Is that you? Counsel?
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. So, this is, the, it goes along with Article 10. So, Article 10, there was a vote to adopt the format of the general code for the general bylaws. This is part and parcel of that, except that it applies to the zoning bylaws. It is still a zoning, considered a zoning bylaw change, so it requires a two-thirds vote, and that's why this was separated into two different articles, because the general bylaw codification required a majority vote, and this one requires a two-thirds. Otherwise, the explanation is exactly the same as it was for the other article.
Thank you, counsel. Planning board recommendation was 5-0 on this. Yes, sir?
Alan made it 148A Plymouth Street. Mr. Moderator, if I had paged ahead and read this, I would have said, this is the language that should have been in the other one. Just a point of, an observation, we get contentious sometimes because things aren't clear. This is very clear. The other bylaw, the other article should have been written the same way. That's just a point of observation.
Thank you. Any other comments on Article 13? Seeing no movement to the mic, we will open the vote. This will require a two-thirds vote. Do you have that set up? You're all set? Vote is open. Five seconds. Close the vote. This passes 148 to 9. Article 13 is adopted. Article 14 is a petition article. Yeah, that's you. Your turn.
Lucky I am.
Come on down.
I have written up an amendment, and thanks for the sheets, and thanks for this organization.
You're welcome. I had a lot of help.
The best thing is we can read everybody's names. Don't you know who they are for the first time? There we go. But anyway, I'm going to amend, not amend, but I'm going to postpone, and I've written it up.
You want to indefinitely postpone?
Definitely postpone it. And if you can see and you read the article, as the redevelopment, I stuck in that sentence. Redevelopment authority members shall be eligible to serve on the finance committee and/or council on aging. Now, that's, it's been repealed, so it's done.
So, you don't need to make out a motion slip for it, because it's really not an amendment. You're indefinitely postponing your petition. It needs a second.
I didn't know if the town clerk needed it, but that's fine.
You just need a second.
I'm fine.
Motion is made and seconded. Any further comments? Seeing none.
Thank you.
Motion to indefinitely postpone. It's not numbered, so it's citical, citizens petition, petition for Article 437? How are we going to identify? Oh, I'm sorry. It's on the other page. My error. It's Article 14. Open the vote. Please begin. This is to indefinitely postpone. A yes vote makes it go away. A no vote means we discuss it some more. Five seconds. And close the vote. And that passes 147 to 4 to indefinitely postpone. Moving on to Article 15, and I would ask the chair of the finance committee, Pat, if you'd make a motion to indefinitely postpone this article as well.
Okay. We'll make a motion to postpone Article 15 in the warrant indefinitely.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to postpone indefinitely Article 15. Any comments? Seeing none. Could you open the vote when you get that printed up? Yeah, relax. Yes. Actually, yeah, we can do that if it make it easier. Why don't we just do a vote, you want to just do a voice vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, that's easy. It passes with a majority. I'll do better next year, I promise. Well, maybe not. Article 16 is a petition article. Mr. Farini.
Want to open the article?
And Matt needs a second?
I do.
Perfect. Motion is made and seconded to open Article 16.
I'd like to make another motion to allow my counsel to represent me and speak to this article, another town.
That has been, motion made and seconded. That requires a majority vote. Is there any comment to that? Hearing? None? Not sure. I think it just goes to a vote. Yeah, okay. Can you? This requires a majority vote. Could probably do a voice vote on this, too. Yeah, got a second. Try a voice vote on this. All those in favor of allowing their attorney to present this article, he is not a Carver town resident, which is why there's a request for this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. Now we got to start writing it down. I believe it's Brian, Brian Bertram. Do you want to put his name in there? Brian, B-R-Y-A-N, Bertram. It's a simple majority. Okay. Yes, that's fine. Could you open the vote? 20 seconds. Five seconds. Close the vote. Article fa, the motion fails, 76 to 78 to not allow Mr. Bertram to speak. Mr. Farini.
Yes, then I'll speak to the motion then.
Okay. Do you, did you want, you have five minutes?
Yeah.
To present it, unless you want to request longer.
I will take those five minutes.
Okay. He gets five minutes on a presentation of an article, yes?
Okay.
Your convenience, sir.
Good evening. I am here tonight to talk about Article 16. This would require facilities that use lithium-ion battery technology at large scale first to obtain a permit from the town to do so. The reason for this article is safety. Lithium-ion batteries have many benefits, but at large scale, they also pose significant risks. With lithium-ion batteries do not work properly, what may result is called a thermal runaway. These batteries are made up of many cells. Sometimes one or more can overheat. Excessive heat promotes a chemical reaction that makes the battery work in the first place, creating even more heat, ever more chemical reactions. This can lead to a disastrous spiral called a thermal runaway. Batteries in thermal runaway may catch fire, explode, or release toxic smoke in the air. These fires are also extremely difficult to put out. For example, pouring water on them really, if ever, will work. The acceptable protocol is to let them burn in place and keep the fire from spreading. This can last for days at a time. All the while, smoke may be released into the air, or it is necessary to use water to contain the fire. The water runs off into the groundwater and potentially drinking water resources. These fires are serious, and we currently have no good way to put them out. Take, for example, a 2019 thermal runaway at a large lithium-ion battery energy storage facility in Surprise, Arizona, caused an explosion, sent four firefighters to a hospital, and released smoke and chemicals into the air. Or if you want a recent one, only a couple weeks ago, Ote Mesa Battery Facility in California caught fire. The facility burned for days, releasing smoke, chemicals into the air. These are the only two of many other events that have occurred. Unfortunately, large-scale lithium-ion battery facilities sometimes do experience thermal runaways despite best efforts to prevent it, and when this happens, the consequences can be severe. Making the situation worse, the current regulatory environment is not developed enough to ensure the safety of large-scale lithium-ion battery developments. A consultant hired by the Arizona Public Service Commission asked the fire, after the fire in Arizona concluded that regularizations, standards, and codes for these technologies were inadequate. This shouldn't be a surprise. Use of this technology at a large scale still is fairly new, and the industry is very opaque. So, having said it all, it should be clear why we, why we have proposed this article. This article is about protecting Carver. The proponents of this article are not opposed to lithium-ion battery technology. We understand its benefits, but we also think that the existing oversight of the technology at large scale is not enough. As is often the case, there's been a rush to use a new promising technology in bigger ways, and the rush has gotten ahead of the regulation and necessary to make this technology safe at a large scale. This article would step in to fill the current gaps in the regulatory framework for large-scale developments. This article would create a permit system for large-scale developments of lithium-ion battery. It would give the town the ability to review the proposal, scrutinize it for safety, and would give Carver the means to protect itself from dangerous situations that arise in this community. This is, this article is not a criticism of our town, our fire department, who does one hell of a job, or any of the officials. This may be, they may be doing a great job following the This may be they may be doing a great job following the current standards. The problem is these standards are inadequate as it as it is the way we deal with the fires, to burn them in place. All I'm asking for is this article to be approved. It just puts safety, additional safety measures in place to protect our town, our children. It will even protect our cranberry growers because if there is a fire and this thing burns out of control and it releases contaminants, it's going to contaminate our crops and our industry and destroy our town. So all I'm asking for is to vote yes and just put safety measures in to help us all. Thank you.
Slap the clock. The timer had frozen, so I did not cut it short. There's still 51 seconds on the clock. Is there anybody else that would like to continue on for that time period? And then we will go to the next to comments. I'll certainly go ahead and identify and
Hi, Patty Cooney, 5 Canterbury Path. I also support this. I have small children in town and I definitely would like to have a plan in place that I can look at and tangibly touch and know that, hey, this is what I have to do if I hear the siren go off. I need to get my children where or do what? We've asked before, but we've never received anything, you know, that tells us definitively, this is what we have to do. So please, help keep my kids safe and keep your guys' kids safe. This place is so close to the elementary school. We need proper, you know, emergency evacuation plans, just things to keep us safe. So please vote yes on this safety plan.
Thank you, Patty. You can zero that. I'm going to hold off on further public comment till we hear from public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Craig Weston, 17 Meadow Street, your fire chief. I'd just like to start by, as your fire chief for almost 19 years and serving Carver Public Safety for over 35 years, the integrity of my family and the Carver Fire Department has always been and will always be my highest priority. I certainly hope I have proven that serving you all throughout my career. In 2018, when my family was approached by a renewable energy company in regards to a proposed energy storage facility, I immediately recognized that as your fire chief and considered the authority having jurisdiction, I needed to remove myself from that process, allowing an unbiased public safety review of the project. I then filed a document, which is called the Disclosure of Appearance of Conflict of Interest as required by the mass general law with the Town Administrator's Office, the Select Board's Office, the Town Clerk's Office. As part of the disclosure, I have delegated my full authority as the fire chief to the deputy fire chief, Eric Jermaine, on all issues pertaining to this parcel. Deputy Jermaine has the authority to oversee Assistant Deputy Fire Chief Jesse Boyle on code reviews, pertaining permitting and any special permits required by the fire department on this matter. Also, if Deputy Jermaine needed to discuss this matter at a higher level, he could refer to the Town Administrator or any individuals on the state levels. Additionally, in order to eliminate the appearance of any future conflicts, I removed myself from the involvement in input from any renewable energy projects submitted to the fire department as all projects are reviewed by Assistant Deputy Boyle in charge of code enforcement with assistance with Deputy Jermaine if needed. With that said, I would defer any questions in regards to public safety matters to Deputy Jermaine and Assistant Boyle. Thank you for your time. Appreciate that.
Good evening, everyone. Eric Jermaine, 196 Main Street. I'm your deputy fire chief. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Anyone that knows anything about our fire department and our personnel, we do not engage in politics and we work only with the truth and with the facts as our impeccable reputation is of the utmost importance to us. As a point of clarification, there have been misleading yard signs, leaflets and social media posts, some of those available in the lobby at this venue, by unknown authors who used the Carver Fire Department name and photographs of our facilities urging voters to come here tonight and support this article, misrepresenting us, your Carver Fire Department. We apologize to those of you who came here tonight based on the on that misrepresentation. Carver Fire Department does not support this article for several reasons. And I would like to ask our code enforcement officer, deputy Assistant Deputy Chief Jesse Boyle to come up and speak to those merits.
Good evening, fellow residents of Carver. Mr. Moderator. Through you. My name's Jesse Boyle. I'm the Assistant Deputy Fire Chief here in Carver and my job title is code enforcement and fire prevention. So I come to work every day with safety in mind. I come to work every day and review plans to make sure that they're done properly and make sure that we're implementing them as the code sees fit. So I could certainly appreciate the concerns brought forward tonight for safety. I come to work every day to make sure that we're all safe, that the firefighters are safe, that our families are safe and certainly the public. So I'd like to address some of the issues that I think all of us have some concerns about and I'll be brief. I'm going to start with the Massachusetts fire codes. Massachusetts fire codes regulate energy storage systems. They have for several years. Whenever an energy storage facility is installed, it's required to be permitted through the fire department. So in order for it to be operational and installed, it requires a permit issued by the fire department, which must be renewed annually. Within Massachusetts general laws and what's called the fire prevention regulations, that gives the fire department jurisdictional authority in the town of Carver to oversee any fire codes. And that means that we can assure that the fire codes are applied when the facility is designed and built as well as as it operates to make sure that it's maintained properly. And this, of course, goes beyond energy storage systems. It's really pretty widespread in anything in our lives. As a result of that, the command staff here at the Carver Fire Department, we're all trained and certified in plans review and fire prevention and code enforcement. I'll add a little anecdote that that helps me to understand things sometimes when I use comparisons and analogies. But if a carpenter were to build a house in Carver and they went to the zoning bylaws or they went to the general bylaws, the carpenter's not going to see anything that says a house must have a roof or a light switch must not electrocute you or you should have a door. Those aren't in the bylaws. They're not in the zoning bylaws. They're in the building codes. Much like everything that's in the fire code is not mentioned within zoning bylaws and general bylaws. They have their own place in the fire code. Which brings me to discuss zoning bylaws. So you might wonder what the fire department knows about zoning. Hi, Kevin. Kevin taught me everything I know. Chairman of the Planning Board right in front of me here. So the fire department has quite a role in zoning.
I think what he's addressing is the safety aspect.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. What I'm addressing is some of the documents that have been placed forward in this building that say that there is no regulation and no permit required. So I wanted to speak to the fact that there in fact is a permit required through the planning board. A special permit is required for all battery storage facilities as outlined in our zoning bylaws. May I continue?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So zoning bylaws are really for the use of land.
Will. I'll give you all the time you need, I promise. I'm sorry, Jesse.
Thank you, Mr. Jermaine. The zoning bylaws are required for land use. It basically says if you can build something and if you can, where you can build it. It's been in place for quite some time. I believe we have 10 different zoning districts. I think something like that, okay? And each of those zoning districts have different things that you can put in there. So energy storage systems are regulated in our own bylaws. A special permit is required because it's an industrial use. It's right in, I think we approved it in 2020 right here on this floor. So according to Section 2230 in the use schedule, it's subject to site plan review. Now during site plan review, that means that all of the stakeholders in the town of Carver have the opportunity to submit comments to the planning board. This includes the fire department, emergency services, police department, the select board. Even the town treasurer has the opportunity to submit comments for whatever this project is that's going in front of site plan review. We commonly sit in site plan reviews and submit comments to the planning board. This has been going on for quite some time. Additionally, the town engineer has the opportunity to review everything that goes with the special permit. I believe we currently have at least six, if not perhaps more, permits that have been issued by our zoning board for energy storage systems. So it is incorrect to say that there are no requirements or no permits that are required currently. I want to talk about safety for a moment. We have one operational, actually, I should say four. It's one vendor, but we have four separate operational energy storage facilities in town right now operating at about 15 megawatts. Those that those projects are fully permitted by the planning board. They're also fully permitted by this fire department. We have an additional facility that was permitted by the planning board and it is installed and is in its final phases of commissioning. And that will receive a permit from the fire department once it is fully commissioned and operational. The facility, the large 150-megawatt utility-grade facility that's at discussion tonight is also fully permitted by the planning board, fully permitted by the Carver Fire Department. Every item within the fire code has been met or exceeded as confirmed by a third-party engineer at the tune of almost $30,000, which is a fee that was paid by the developer to confirm by this third-party engineering firm that everything that is supposed to be done has been done and then some. It really, the review passed with flying colors. There were really no issues whatsoever. And finally, I'd like to just address the article again, appreciating that folks are taking the time to be serious about safety in town and joining us in the fire department and our mission for safety. We've always participated in creating bylaws. There are many new bylaws that we've participated in and we've revised bylaws. The fire department's always had a seat at the table when reviewing new bylaws and making changes to it. In this particular situation, there was no consultation with the fire department. We weren't consulted. Our opinions weren't asked and nobody came to us to discuss this bylaw. We kind of find out about it when people were putting signs in their yards with our picture on it. The article itself, there are numerous technical errors in there. There are several omissions and there are a lot of contradictions within the bylaw. I believe that approving this article could lead to fewer regulations that we already have and regulations that are currently in place. And as a result, the fire department asks you to not support this article. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moderator. I'm going to recognize in just a second because I have counsel that wants to weigh in also. And then we'll open it up to everybody else. Counsel.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator. So this proposal proposes to add a requirement to the town's general bylaws that requires a permit from the planning board to operate a battery storage facility. As some or all of you may know, at this town meeting in 2023, the town enacted a zoning bylaw that also requires a special permit from the planning board in order to operate a battery storage facility. It is not clear what the difference is between this proposal and the one that has been previously approved. However, because the town currently regulates battery storage as a zoning bylaw, there is a concern as to whether or not this bylaw should have had to go through the 48 procedures of a planning board, public hearing, notice to interested parties and a two-thirds vote of this body. Both the Supreme Judicial Court and the Attorney General have found that you cannot evade the requirements of the zoning act simply by calling something a general bylaw. Rather, the the court and the Attorney General will look at the substance of what is being done and how that subject has traditionally been regulated in both the specific community and the state. So here, first of all, statewide, typically when something requires a permit from the planning board, that is a zoning matter. And here in Carver, battery storage is specifically regulated under the town's zoning bylaws. So in my opinion, it is highly unlikely that this, if approved here tonight, would be approved by the Attorney General. And even if it were, it would be subject to legal challenge if it were to be applied to a subsequent applicant.
Thank you, counsel. Now I'll be more than happy to open it up.
Honor Farini, 84 Fosdick Road. I just can't believe. I've asked everybody, as many peoples I have in town, do you know any safety precautions when this thing catches? Nobody knows. Nobody. I've, I'm sick of the, I'm sorry, fire department. They keep yelling, oh, we already got it all in order. Just ask. We've asked. We haven't gotten any answers. Okay, I got a question for the school committee. Now, if there's an explosion and you have all your children in school, have they told you what to do with the children? Can any of you sit here, tell us? Have they told you what to do with their children at the school? Okay?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. May I respond?
Go ahead, Stephanie.
After last town meeting, we did reach out to the superintendent to ask him to meet with the fire department to have that very discussion along with the elementary school principal, which they did have. So we did have our own concerns that we brought to administration.
Okay, what about all the citizens in the town? I haven't heard any plans at all or even the business people. I know a lot of business, the people have own businesses. I asked them about it and they said, oh, my God, I didn't even know. So what are we supposed to fucking do?
You know, I'm really going to ask you, Mrs. Farini, please. I know it's an emotional statement for you to make, but really?
Really zoning for it? That's what's more important is zoning? What about the safety?
Please. The whole evening has gone very nicely. Let's not throw it away now. Mary. Excuse me. Mary.
Mary Dormer, 162 Plymouth Street. My first statement that I want to make is, why aren't we all supporting the safety? We're all concerned. There's no evacuation route. There should have been a town-wide meeting where everybody was invited and said, this is how you get out of town if something happens. We don't know who's going to clean up the the aquifer, the environment, the air if this does blow. Those are all concerns for all of us. We have to live here and we have to get along. A couple of other things. This is not as this this putting it in in a general bylaw gives Carver a little bit more control over this and every other installation. From a safety aspect, Cranberry Point applied for an exemption of our bylaws and they were granted it by the DPU and that applies to our zoning bylaws. So they don't have to come to Carver. They don't have to sit, well, I understand. Let me rephrase that. They don't have to come to Carver and ask permission for everything, which is a concern. And I think some of those things will affect our safety. This is this is about the safety of everybody in town and and it shocks me that the fire department is not trying to work harder with the residents to say, we hear you, let's have a meeting. Let's, I mean, we should be having mandatory fire drills like with evacuation routes. I don't even understand what's going on here. For year after year after year, we have stood up here. We have been ridiculed and and I have to sit here and listen to the stay safe. We thought it was great that you guys had stay safe there. I, you know, yeah, we should stay safe. But we are ridiculed because we're fighting for the safety of this town and our town officials are not. And another thing I want to point out, in 2018, town council stood up and told you that Cranberry Point, if we didn't vote for it, had a buy right. That was a lie. They did not have a buy right. So you were duped into into voting for it in the first place. So I really wouldn't listen to anything that town council has to say tonight because he's been wrong in the past. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Sean Patine, 17 Bo.
I don't think you pull that mic up. Try that again.
Sean Patine, 17 Bo. Correct me if I'm wrong in any of this. I ex-Navy, was taught some firefighting. The reason there isn't a plan The reason there isn't a plan is because there are 100 plans. If the wind is coming from the south, if the wind is coming from the east, if it's raining, if it's sunny, if Route 3 is backed up because it's the weekend on 4th of July, all of that is going to change how the fire department chooses to respond to a situation. So there are 1,000 plans. They have the knowledge, they have the experience. They're going to make the best choice at any one time, given the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Catherine Nolan, 17 Great Meadow Drive. Just for the record, I can pretty much see where this facility is from my house, which is why I'm concerned. I did want to ask, and you'll have to excuse my ignorance, the 10 megawatts that's mentioned in this article, is there a reason why that number was picked? Is that what it's approved for? Is approved for more? Is an actual number approved, like, currently? It's 150. Is there a reason why 10 is being mentioned?
I guess I'd have to ask the writer of that article. Mr. Farini, if you'd care to answer that question, or Conneche. I didn't write the article, so I don't have that answer for you.
Just a matter of clarification, last year when we passed the battery storage bylaws, we separated it into three classifications: household, intermediate, and the Class III, which would be 10,000 or 10 megawatts or more. And that's, that was just the classification levels that we put it in.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, right now, it's approved for 150? I will say, just, I have gone to some of the meetings before. I do appreciate how persistent you are. Again, I can pretty much see this from my house. It's very concerning to me. And I have no doubts that our fire department will do what they can to ensure we're safe. I'll be honest with you, I am all for passing this. I, like I said, I do have my concerns. I don't know that we know the extent of what could happen. And, you know, I understand, you know, okay, there could be a need for 100 different plans, but I don't know that we have any plan. So I would feel more comfortable having more safety measures in place and getting a plan in place. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mary. It's your second time up, though.
Mary Dormer, 162 Plymouth Street. I just, through you, Mr. Moderator, I just want to address the comment that was made earlier about, you know, the wind could be blowing in different ways. There are 974 homes in that neighborhood. I'm okay. I can hop on Route 44, and I'm out of, I'm out of here. I'm in Plymouth. None of those people know which way to go. What if the roads are closed? It doesn't have to do, it doesn't have to be about which way the wind is blowing. It doesn't have to be about if there are fireworks going. There could be a million different things going on, and the last thing that they're going to be thinking about is telling people which way to go in their cars, what the traffic design is going to be. We need to know prior to it. We need to be prepared if something happens. We have to be smart about this. This is, this is happening in our town. We're not trying to stop it. What we're trying to do is protect every single resident in this town. What about the air? Do we shelter in place? How do you shelter in place? What do you do? Do you put something over the window? Do you just close the window? Do you put a towel by the window? There are so many different questions that we need answered. This, I mean, I just, it shocks me that we're not coming together as a community and saying, we need to come and get a firm plan. People need to know how to get out of town. People need to know what it means to shelter in place. Parents need to know whether or not they can go to the school and get their children out of school. Because, let me tell you, it's going to be even more of a mess if you have 700 parents standing outside the school and you're not letting the children, you're not letting the children out. We have to come together. We have to get more safety on this. Thank you.
Savery.
Savery Moore, 12 South Main Street. Through you, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to ask the petitioner a couple of technical questions regarding this. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Mr. Farini.
I'll do the best I can. I have lawyer who wrote it, I can go ask.
It's not that technical. You say here in your petition that the definition of lithium-ion battery storage equipment shall mean equipment utilizing lithium-ion battery chemistry, correct?
Correct.
All right. My second question is, if a facility is using a different chemistry, such as lithium-ion phosphate, this bylaw no longer applies. Is that correct?
The way it's written, it does not, it does not cover it.
Thank you.
All right. I just want to say one-
Hold on a second. Let me reset the timer for you. So, go ahead.
Again, Dan Farini, 84 Fosdick Road. This is, it's, it's not a jab against the fire department. I don't know why you guys are coming up in defense. It's for safety. It's an additional safety measure that we're asking for as residents who live right there. We're just asking to make sure that we have additional safety measures so that we're all comfortable with this thing in my backyard. I can hear it being built. I walk down the street. I can see it being built, and I'm just looking for that security, which I'm hoping this will bring to these people and myself. I've lived in this town 40 years, never brought up any problems, never been, never screamed or complained about anything, because I've been a nice little resident, and this thing shows up in my backyard, and I've been asking questions, and I've been digging. And if you want to know my background, I am an electrical engineer, and I know what happens with these things. And I know the fire department is doing the best they can with the current standards, but the technology is advanced farther than what our standards are today, and we need to protect ourselves because nobody else is. Especially, I'm asking the fire department to look in and approve this, and you guys are pushing back on safety. That's the first time I've ever heard of a fire department pushing back when people are asked for additional safety measures.
Thank you, Mr. Farini. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. My name is Sandy Rapoza, Jill Marie Drive, Carver. And please forgive me for my ignorance.
Not at all.
The only, the only letters that I have in front of my name are MRS. But I do have a question. So there were codes and, and safety plans, I would take it, that were put into place in both Arizona and California where these accidents happened. So, and they were determined to be substandard codes. So my question is, would Carver be following those same codes that Arizona and California had in place? Or are we looking beyond what they did, maybe looking at the mistakes that they made, and see what our town could do differently to, so that we don't have an incident like Arizona or California did?
I'll certainly allow that question to be answered if-
Do I answer that one?
No, I'm going to let you enter, then I'm going to-
I think she deserves an answer. That's why I'm saying that. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, moderator.
Jesse Boyle, Assistant Deputy Chief, Carver Fire Department. Those are some great questions, and I will, the last speaker there from Jill Marie, I will address those questions specifically. No, the facilities in Surprise, Arizona, and the one out in California that's currently having an emergency were designed and built prior to NFPA 855, which was effective in 2021 and has also had its new addition in 2023. As a matter of fact, the Surprise, Arizona, fire department didn't even know that that facility existed. So, yeah, there have been a ton of learning situations that are a result of that. You know, much like a 10-speed bicycle and that plane that Tom Cruise flies in Top Gun, or both modes of transportation, they're very different. The facility that's here in Carver is substantially different than both of those facilities in Surprise, Arizona, as well as the one in California. And I will add, I'm glad you brought up the one in California on the Mexico border, because that building did burn, that facility did burn for several days. And some of the good things that came out of that is the air quality was tested each of those days that it was burning, and the air quality was deemed safe. There was no need for evacuations or stay-in-place orders. I will add that, Mr. Moderator, if I may?
Sure.
I'll address a few of the other questions that were brought up. I believe in my initial words that I spoke to, I did address virtually everything that the speakers have brought up. I'm sorry that it wasn't to your standards or to your liking, but they were addressed. And these are not the opinions of the Carver Fire Department. These are the opinions of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Massachusetts Fire Code, and the National Fire Protection Association, as I said earlier, also confirmed by a $30,000 fee or by an engineer, a third-party engineer with no connection to the town, with no connection to the fire department, and of course, no connection to the developer. I'd like to talk about the schools. I did meet with Mr. Neef as well as Mrs. Moestis last year. I am on the crisis team at the elementary school, so we meet monthly about emergencies and evacuations and stay in place with the school. I'm also part of our active shooter response team, so I can assure you that if there ever is an incident in our schools, I will be there, whether it's a fire incident, whether it's a shooter incident, I will be there. A letter was sent to the developer a few months back and was asked to address the evacuation procedures, asked to specifically address what would happen in our school. So I'd like to read from this letter, if I may, Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
All right.
Excuse me, Deputy Boyle. I just want, I want everyone to have a chance to put their minds at ease. This is a hot topic tonight. There's emotions on both sides of this. I'll give you all the time you need. I'm not going to count your third time up at the microphone as being your third time, because your first time was to present it. So I'll give you all the latitude you need, to be fair on this side of the aisle as well. So please continue, Deputy Boyle.
So again, the question was about, what do we do when there's an emergency? How do we manage it? So what I wanted to first do is address that this is a topic within the NFPA 855, which is the code for these battery storage systems. So first, referring to that and the Mass Fire Code approved documents, including the site emergency response guide, the hazard mitigation agreement, the UL 9548 test reports, as well as a manufacturer's emergency response guide, which is different than the site emergency response guide. All of the aforementioned documents recognize that by design, the product and the site do not represent a hazard to locations situated at distances such as the Carver Elementary School. Since many of these documents are still in draft form, because this was March 19th of this year, or attorney work products, they're the property of plus power and subject to their policies regarding a public release. So part number two, the Town of Carver Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is a comprehensive 200-page document which addresses emergency management, hazard identification, and risk assessment that would be used in any shelter-in-place or evacuation scenario in Carver. This plan is created and maintained through a partnership with the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation, the Wild and Scenic Taunton River Watershed Alliance, the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, or SERPED, as well as our neighboring committees. This document is published online at carvermass.gov and is available at Town Hall. And finally, Carver Public Schools have their own encompassing internal protocols and safety procedures for multiple hazards and a partnership with Carver's public safety team to facilitate such a response. A lot of words. I mean, I read the whole thing.
Thank you, deputy.
Okay. I want to make sure, I know we had a few speakers up here. Were there any other questions that were brought up that I haven't been able to address in my initial statements, as well as these follow-up statements?
Savery Moore, 12 South Main Street. I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Assistant Deputy, moderator.
I don't want to be disrespectful, but Alan Dunham was up before you, so. Alan, do you want to, you mind? Okay. Go ahead, Savery.
Mr. Dunham, my question to you, Mr. Boyle, is you know the chemistry that is being used-
Yes, I do.
Cranberry Point.
Yes, I do. The chemistry being used at Cranberry Point is a Tesla Megapack II XL product. It uses a lithium ferris phosphate technology, LFP.
All right, thank you. Patty, this would be your second time up, so.
Patty Cooney, 5 Canterbury Path. So where can I pick up the plan so I can practice it with my kids?
As I just stated in my letter, it's available at carvermass.org. I think we're .gov, .gov, .org. Somebody help me.
Oh, either.
.gov.
The town's website, as well as, I don't know if Ms. Dayhill can help with the issuance of that, or the emergency management director. I usually use the website. I like the internet thingy, so that works for me. But if somebody wanted a hard copy of it, Tom, do you have copies of that? All right. So Mr. Walsh, Emergency Management Director, does have that in the EOC in the basement of Town Hall.
So I can go to the Town Hall and pick it up?
Certainly can.
Last-
Emergency management's in the basement, and the director is there on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays till noon time.
Okay. So when did they make the plan? Because last year, we didn't have access to any type of plan.
Well, I know the last revision of this plan might have been 2019, Mr. Walsh.
2023.
23, okay, 2023. This is not, nothing new. The Town's local emergency planning committee is, has been in place for decades, and they're constantly reviewing and updating their plans. There's everything in there from tornadoes and hurricanes to civil unrest to anything that would require mass evacuation or shelter in place or anything of that nature. It's pretty standard for any community to have an emergency management director that oversees these plans. The specific question that was asked last year, and I'll look at Mr. Clancy, he made me give a yes or no answer, so I couldn't elaborate, but the answer last year was, there is a specific plan for Cranberry Point? And the answer to that is no, because we already have a town plan that we're going to use in any event for an emergency. I have just said it several times.
I get what you're saying, but I can't do it from the seat. Alan, he's been up there for a bit. It's the Dunham-
Alan Dunham, 11 Ricard Street. I understand all the feelings and the high emotions on this, but we have been going on this for quite a long time, and we're now getting repetitive questions that have been answered, and I would like to see us move the motion, please.
That would require a second.
Second.
Okay. I'm going to let the last speaker standing at the microphone have a shot at it, and then we'll, we'll deal with it. Normally, this is a non-debatable motion and would end all debate, but I don't think it's fair, because this young lady was at the microphone before this was made, so I'm going to allow that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I just wanted to touch based on, I don't know, I'm kind of Googling it, and I see that the Otaya Mesolithium Facility opened not too long ago. It looks like 2019-ish, so I don't think that's a long time ago. I also think that, I don't know if anybody looks, there's this town in Massachusetts called Wendell, Massachusetts, that they just recently, within their town, constructed a new set of rules and bylaws that are going to help protect the people in that town that now have a lithium storage facility in their town. And we just, I just, just hope that we can make that happen and come together as a group. It's not a you and they, a we, a them. It's, can we just please work together? This is in my backyard, and I'm not comfortable with any of it. I agree that everyone's going to do something, but my kid just had this conversation with me today about, so what would we do if there was a problem? And there isn't a yes or no answer. I understand that, but I don't feel like that, I just think that if we all work together as a town and could come up with a plan that's going to work, I don't know, just, everybody has different ideas. I think that at some point, we should really put together different bylaws that are going to protect us. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. With that said, I'm going to allow the motion to call the question to come to force. Would you open the vote? And would you now vote? You have 20 seconds. The vote is open. Excuse me?
Clarify what you're asking.
A yes vote means that this passes? The citizen's petition passes as it's written? They've asked for a call to question, so we're calling for the vote? Oh, I know what you're trying to, my apology. Stop that. That's right. We've asked for a call to question. I believe that requires two-thirds. Okay. So if you want to end all the debate and call the question right now, then a yes vote will end that debate, and then we will move to the motion itself to deal with Article 16. A no vote will continue debate for a little while longer. Can you reset? My apologies.
So this is a motion to end debate?
It's a, it's a call to question. It's a motion to end all debate.
Okay. Simple majority?
No, it's a two-thirds.
So maybe that's what you're going to do? It's changing.
Yeah.
There you go.
There we go.
Ready?
Open the, open the vote?
Vote is open.
The vote is open.
We have a more time.
A no vote will-
A yes vote ends debate.
Yeah, I just was going to get to that. We'll do it that way. A yes vote will end all debate, and then we will go to calling the original motion. A no vote will continue this on until we end up calling the vote for the motion. So let's do that over again, because I was talking during it, so. I want to keep, this is a big deal tonight. I want to keep this 100% fair, because it's hard on both sides of the aisle. And right is right, and wrong is wrong, and we don't all have to agree with each other. It's just a big deal for both sides, so.
So another motion to end debate on Article 16.
Yes. Reset.
It's a majority.
Okay. And open the vote? Please cast your vote. And close the vote. So it's 143 to 20. So this is a motion to move the question, which passes by a two-thirds vote. So based on that, we will now go to the original article as written.
To write one?
No, it just goes back to the original article. So it's Article 16. Ready to go. Open the vote?
Voting is open.
And begin your vote. This is a majority vote, and it'll be Article 16 as written. Five seconds. Close the vote. And it fails, 71 to 91. So Articles.
75.
I'm sorry? And with that said.
Motion to adjourn?
I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
He made one, I made one.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Town meeting is over.